Yeah, man.
Oh, my God.
I have to.
I think that we're up.
And try to.
You're not.
Yes.
I just.
So.
Who are you?
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, folks are at home.
Hey.
I have not.
Yeah.
I will call this diversity meeting, committee meeting, October seventh, nine o'clock to order. Mr. Zink, the vote please.
Mr. D. Yeah, Ms. Bodie.
Yeah.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Card.
Here.
Ms. Aguilar.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
It's more. Mr. Vogelmann. Mr. Zink.
Uh, we realized just as we were sitting here that we need to add number two, approve the agenda to the agenda.
I must have deleted that all. I'm sick, so.
So please make that addition to your agenda and then obviously the numbers will change as you go down. So.
I know how that.
Agenda will be number two. Is that clear to everyone?
Mm hmm. You know how changing the numbers confuses me.
I'm trying to keep you up, Kelly. All right, with that being said, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
But the agenda will be. I'm sorry, you're correct. I'll take a motion to approve the amendment to the agenda. Mrs. Bodie, Mrs. Schaefer. Hold on, please.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D. Yes. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Aguilar.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Zink.
And now I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
So come on.
Thank you.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Trudy, yes. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Aguilar.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Zink.
All right, we'll move to number four on the agenda. I'm sorry, number three on the agenda for the minutes of the March third, twenty twenty second meeting. Everyone had a chance to review those.
Yes.
Yes. Is there motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
That can.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Please call the votes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Aguilar.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes.
We'll move to number four, the events planned for the twenty twenty second, twenty twenty three school year. I assume there's two.
That's me. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for being here. We, we all mentioned we hate missing the Johnny fanfare, but I didn't even know the principal let her know.
Oh, good.
I would encourage anybody who can get to those, especially the little guys get to it. Guys and gals, it's a good time. High school, man. And but the little ones are fun. And then secondly, I want to, um, Spanish, Hispanic heritage month. Hopefully, um, at least through a few tweets I've sent of some information, you'd be able to learn some things. I learn as I go, continue to learn. Lucky to have some people, um, of that cauldron that ethnicity did helps me when I make a mistake to learn. So I continue to do that. Um, I do want to say the, the things I've been tweeting have come from Miss Smith. She's, uh, works at Adina. And I sent that to all the principals to be a morning announcement if they wanted to use that or they could use their own. You'd be shocked how our Hispanic kids and our Latino kids feel during this time when we read those at school. Um, they'll, they see in the hall, I was principal, oh, thank you, we don't, you know, never see, I got something new for you. So it's really a good thing. Um, as far as things playing with the, the champions, um, just, just a little bit of, uh, the last two or three years with the champions have been sketchy because of COVID. We haven't, they haven't really been able to meet. And let me go back. Ms. Moore is out today. Keep her in her thoughts. She's been doing what the champion, she's fine, she's fine. Just, uh, keep her in results. Uh, she's been from the get go, she's been here with the champions. Learned that trust and that respect with them. Um, you know, I'm kind of a Johnny come lately with, with it, uh, three years in now and learning. A lot about that. So, um, this year, as far as things planned for the, for the years, there's really not a whole lot planned because we've been, um, kind of hit and miss the last two years. So we do have the, the champions retreat. They had that August one and two in Houston Woods. Um, you know, every summertime, everybody couldn't be there, but we're trying to eliminate everybody for two days out of the classroom as much as possible. So we did it in the summer, thought that was a better option. Uh, we know a lot of people can be there. And then we do have quarterly meetings when they first started this, um, and you'll, if you see the, um, the, uh, the, we had the same champions expectations and qualifications. Uh, if you first see it, it said, uh, monthly meetings. They used to do it every six weeks. Um, it's kind of stopped with COVID, but now we kind of, when I talk to, uh, Mr. Kramer and everyone else about doing it, Mr. Vogelmann, we're doing it quarterly. And the reason that is because we do have trouble getting subs. It's important for them to be there. So we don't want to do it every month because it just puts a pressure on the principals. And believe me, I understand that from my previous role. Um, but I did, we, we gave it to them way in advance, the, the dates and the principals are working on stuff. So I think they're doing a pretty good job with that. They're just trying to be, um, considerate. And I made sure when I, when we made the dates that they would never be on a Monday or Friday. Because those are kind of days, sometimes we had a lot of people out.
Yeah.
So I said Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, you pick from those dates and we'll go and as a, um, the champions and Ms. Moore picked the dates, I said, let me have them and that's where we're going. So there'll be, first one, September thirteenth, November sixteenth will be next, January nineteenth, and then March fourteenth. And then probably we'll have something after school's out. Um, we'll have a little get together and I'll buy some, some advertisers and things just to, uh, celebrate and appreciate what they're doing. So those are the only things we really have planned. This year's goal is to focus on the champions. I think my first year, the year before I came over here, it was get, get information out to teachers, really to focus on the champions because we have some new ones that have come on. Uh, some that have been there forever had really a lot of training back when it first started because they did every month and Ms. Moore did some training and things of that nature. Uh, the last two or three years, we just haven't been able to. Um, so we, we were trying to be considerate of people's health. We're trying to be conservative, time out of the building. Because it's taken from the kids and then we can't get subs and that causes problems. That's really what we, the, the things that are planned for this year. So any questions on that? Yes, ma'am.
Um. So. Training, when you're, when you're talking about, um, focusing on the champions, you're talking about training and getting kind of up to speed to where some of the older champions are.
Yeah.
And where do you get your training and what does that look like?
Uh, we do it all, we do a lot of plays. We do a lot of things on, um, I have people, there's a guy, Mr. Burton at Xavier that I've talked to some, he does some of this kind of work at Xavier, made him talk. So we pick and we pull from different places, not like we have one set, um, place we use, uh, it comes here and there. And I, if you want specifics, I can get those. I don't have them with me today.
You can email it to me.
Yeah.
And I would say one of the, one of the specifics thinking about our last training is our wellness coordinator, Megan Cameron, and our director of, um, special services, Lori Brown, and really looking at, again, all of the efforts of health and wellness, not only for our students, for our staff. And that was a real focus on what mental health access looks like, um, and different situations, both post pandemic. Technically, we're not post pandemic, but post pandemic, as well as continued assimilation of students that have been virtual and coming into buildings that they had been to before. And our new students coming to the district, we've, we've enlarged our enrollment by four to five hundred students this year. And what that assimilation also looks like as people are coming back together. So that was part of our, our training came from our wellness coordinators here in the district.
Thank you. But what do these, do these, um, champions have events? Do they schedule events as well?
We have it in three or four years. There was a time where they would have, uh, new PDs in the, uh, three years, probably PD in the building. Um, at this point, we have it and we're not planning, there's nothing planned this year because we want to, we, we, we need to make sure these, these folks are comfortable. Because let's be honest, they, they volunteer their time. They don't get paid for this, okay? Unless we do something outside of school day. So this is something they do all, they're hard because they want to make sure all kids feel included. So, um, you know, there's time out of my pocket, I'll find a little gift or whatever, just because, you know, send a nice card with a piece of candy, whatever I can do to make them feel comfortable. Um, and Ms. Moore as well, but there's nothing there. Um, as they just, they're volunteering their time for this.
So if they're not doing, I'm confused. So they're volunteering their time, but they're not having events planned. So what are they, what are they doing?
Well, here what I would say, champions don't really initiate everything. We're there for support. So example would be this, um, just the other day, I'm not giving school names, but young man, African American kid had braids, right? And one of his braids fell out. We went up and told his mom, the teacher said, throw it away. That's a no-no. Okay? The teacher didn't tell him that. He was confused, but that's a no-no. The principal said, I would never known that. I didn't, it's a different culture. So we tried to learn those things. I don't know everything about your culture, this culture. I know, I, I try to study and learn as much as I can and ask questions. Because when people say and do things that some people don't like, I don't think it's usually out of hatred.
Yeah.
I think it's usually out of knowledge and just ignorance of the, of the topic. I've done it myself, whether it's LGBTQ students, um, you know, we had, I remember when I was principal of Dakota West and we had a young lady. And they were transitioning and I didn't, didn't know, I never dealt with that. This has been about eight years ago. And, um, no, mom didn't, mom's, mom's a great advocate now, but she, she was new. And I said, um, we've had a meeting, all of us, the counselor, me, principal, you know, T, uh, one of the teachers, I think, and I said, I might not understand all this. It's new to me. Okay, we all raise a certain way and thinking of things. However, I'm willing to learn. And we're going to learn together. And this student had one name I knew for two years and now switched names. And I looked at her and I was very honest. I said, I'm going to mess up. I called you this for two years. And every time I mess up, you correct me and eventually I'm going to get it right. I think that's important that we have those conversations. We don't have to know everything and do everything, but we have to be able to learn about it and accept it, especially when it comes to our kids. It just is, I think that's important, so.
And I would say with, with events being scheduled, it's really driven by the building itself. A perfect example would be an event pre-pandemic that got canceled. But an ESL class at one of our elementaries, they, most of the students in that class were from Guatemala and there was an amazing, um, display down at the museum center. Our kids had never been to the museum center. We have translators lined up to be able to do that. But this is also an opportunity for them to see some of their culture highlighted. And it tied into what they were learning in their classroom, what they were learning in their regular ed classroom, so that it was a field trip. But also something that the champion, because that champion in that building was ESL teacher, then that is something that they did. But everything tied into the curriculum that was going on in that building. Did every building do that? No, because that wasn't the culture of those building. And it didn't necessarily fit into the curriculum of what they were doing. So from that standpoint, then making sure that we had all of the right supports so that every kid has that docent at the museum center. They didn't have to worry about translating. We had chaperones that were there that could translate. We had chaperones that also could support students as, as they ask questions. So it, it's trying to make sure that things are also linked to the curriculum and what they're doing.
So then, so building by building, we're not trying to cook a cover.
Right.
Well, and that's silly to do that because the Cotees and the Dakota West are two different atmospheres. Let's just be real. When I, when I was principal, it's still, it's just different. Not bad. My three, my two doggone for me, I spent all my life at West. It's not bad, it's just different. So how we do things, we want to do them the right way, but they don't have to be exactly the same. And that's just in that, I mean, if you walk in the teacher's classroom, they're going to teach the same curriculum. But how this teacher teaches, now this teacher teaches, it might be a little different.
Yeah.
But they need to get it, and depends on the makeup of their class. Um, you have to try to teach, um, to your learners and that's hard. That's why teaching's so hard. Everybody learn the same, you know? When we did a, uh, a book study last year, What Happened to you by Dr. Perry and, uh, Oprah. I don't, I'm not a big reader, I'm not going to lie to you. I read for work. I don't read for pleasure. My wife and kids read for pleasure. I listen to it, right? And then I marked it as a book. That's, I learned that way better. To where somebody else might listen to it and it might drive them crazy. Just different. So I think that's important that, and, and if we look at, um, you can pull that, I'm on, uh, you know, insult anybody, you can pull up that on the internet about studies, how when kids feel comfortable, they can see themselves, what they're learning. Or they see, uh, something that is interesting to them, they're going to learn better. So I think that's important. So our teachers have a tough job in trying to do that with all the different kids we have. They do a great job, but it's challenging. I have a daughter teaches now, she asked me, what do you got? I got, you know, it's just as challenging.
Other questions about events?
Uh, I have questions as a new board member. This, I think this is the unit that has been, me last, uh, meeting that we had, I had one meeting also. My, my question may be deeper than the event itself, so.
I have more. I have more on events. Okay, so you're next. You have September, November, January and March.
Yes.
Um, can you send me those dates?
Yes.
If you get a chance, please. And then, um, so the next champion meeting is held in September.
They already had it in September.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. In November. In November. Um, so where is it held? I would like a list of all the participants. Also, who is in the supervisory roles and what will they discuss? And then a copy of the agenda.
I will tell you.
I can email that to you.
Yeah, discussing the agenda is not done yet. So when that's done, we can, we can, uh, what Ms. Ms. Moore will do is email, um, the champions for agenda items. We may have some things, let's see what they want to talk about, kind of like I do with my student groups. The first one I have stuff, but after that, I email them the week before and say, what can we talk about? What's, what are you loving in school? So we, what was the other part of that? I'm sorry.
Um, just all the participants and then who are in supervisory roles? From what you were saying, um, I think I'm catching on that there are teachers that are in supervisory roles because you have to find substitutes for them.
No, they're just out of the building that day, so they have fun.
But what do they do like in the building? Are they just teachers or?
Well, I have teachers, I have aides, I have counselors.
Okay.
You know, I, we, um, might be a psychologist.
Yeah.
Um, so a little bit of IAs, a little bit of everything.
Can I get a list of those?
Yeah.
And I would say the supervisory.
You're by all.
The, the, the administration.
Because you took the time to cover it.
Yes. During, during the supervising.
I believe champions, champions on the.
There's a lot of what is on that agenda specifically is brought by the building. And so a champion, again, every building. Building leadership. And every building has a leadership team and that's, the champion is, is a piece of that and the champion then is, you know, a, a building leadership team is, talks about all the needs, both physical and educational. So things that need to go to Chris Persarge, things like that, things that need to go to curriculum, things that need to, you know, okay, we're, we're having this and how do we address it?
Okay, and then what is the criteria?
Criteria is this, when this first started, well, let me go back to the beginning. Champions, the low line champions came about, you guys, you guys have been here with this. I wasn't, I was here, but I was in the building, so I wasn't directly involved. We just do secondary. Um, there was a community conversation and I believe they were really talking about, um, not enough kids of color AP classes. And then they talked about teachers not understanding cultures and saying things they shouldn't say and those types of things. Uh, Dr. Mantilla was the superintendent there. So there was a group, what was the group called?
It was AAUL, which is African American United for Lakota. And this was actually, the community conversation was facilitated by our, um, community conversation facilitator, Jess Stack. And Dr. Mantilla and Dr. Angie Brown were part of that, that the parents really wanted to be able to have this conversation. And people from all over the community came, some, there were some administrators, all the board members were there, staff. A confirmation, probably at that time when you were doing community conversation, probably one of our best attended.
Yeah.
You know, we had a hundred people.
A lot of very there.
And. Yes.
Yeah.
And it, and it was looking at the idea of, quite honestly, our advanced classes at high school level. And I can really speak to what that looks like as somebody who didn't move in. Um, if a student didn't do math plus in sixth grade, then that didn't allow them to do algebra in junior high. Which then in high school, they had to do basically in order to get into an AP calc class, you had to have all of the maths done. Which meant for us, we moved here, uh, my oldest one was a freshman. So no, none of that. So in order to be able to get help, then he had to do a double block class, which means that he had to do geometry, the entire year of geometry in one semester. And then he had to do, uh, the, the pre calc and both of these are honors classes. So another whole year of math in the second semester and then start in order to catch up.
Wow.
And so as they looked at that, a move in student may or may not have, depending on other things in their schedule, if they, then that also eliminates some other things in that schedule to be able to get to that. And students may not go on to those AP classes. So that's where it really started. And, and one of the things of us changing how we do gifted now is that access starts much earlier. It's not just decided by a math class and it looks at a variety of other subject areas. So that how we have taken that information, and this was February of two thousand fourteen. How we take that information and where we are now, we have opened it up for students all across the district of all age levels. But we're not going to have that, you know, three to five years from now from that access.
Well, and that was linked to science as well. Because if you couldn't get in the advanced math, then you also weren't allowed to be in the advanced science. So we removed that barrier for people and gave them multiple onramps of how they could get there.
I'm going to pause this for just one moment, just so we can pretend that we're adhering to an agenda. Are there any further questions about number four, the events planned for the school year?
So.
Any other comments, Mr. Miller?
No, I, I don't have any, thanks.
And I can add some.
Would you, would you please put those in writing just so the board is aware what's going on across the district?
I think if we just put, if it's okay, if we just put everything up to the committee, everyone has this thing, so that'd be good.
That'd be great.
And then I'll add that in the plans as well.
Okay, is there anything further on the events for this year? Any further questions, board?
I think my question. Can I expect the communication?
Uh, next week.
Uh, like Wednesday next week, if I'll track it down if.
Yeah. We'll have it probably Monday. The day I got to run around after this a little bit.
I said, was your question events related?
No, no. Yes, it's just, you know, she asked to, um, the meetings, right, the boys and girls club. Uh, we, we'd be able to talk to them. They give us room to have those, uh, during the day before the kids get there. Um, so.
So the questions now are wide open.
Right.
Okay, and you asked about how they were chosen.
Yes.
Initially, here's, uh, this is some expectations qualifications. Uh, now these could probably be adjusted or made for COVID, so we don't meet, we don't meet monthly and all that. Um, they were chosen, we, we sent email to the principals, we sent them the qualifications, or Ms. Moore did and her team at the time, Dr. Brown and whoever else was there on the road, all of that. And we said, who do you think would be good for this? And they gave us names. And then they would go talk to them, say, we'd like you to do this. And they'd say, yes, we'll do it or not. Um, now, since I've been involved, well, being as, as the time as principal, I picked some teachers, asked four or five, would you like to do this? I think I'm going to mention that, we, you know, something we need or whatever the case may be, send it to Ms. Moore, Dr. Brown, and then they dealt with that. To this point now, we do the same thing. Uh, we either, you know, right now what we get is some of these people, which some schools have three or four, some have one, it just depends what, what the school. They will call, not get emailed from, Ms. Moore get emailed saying, hey, we're going to be a champion. One of the greatest things I had was, um, a couple of my former students at West now teach for us and they're like, call me, we want to be a champion. Which made me really proud, as you can imagine. But I think now we will either we call the principal for names or we'll call, like the champions will come to us that are champion now, hey, Ms. Aguilar said she might want to be a champion. Okay, we might have to talk to her. So we find a planned period before, after school, we can say on a call. And some people, and we have people come and go. It is what it is. Um, one of my former students, Nala, she only, she only this year because, uh, uh, last year, uh, she was getting married and had some things, going back to school, be a teacher, she's an aide. And she, her time was just, she liked, car, you don't be mad about it. I said, no, you do what's best for you. Uh, but I think it's, I don't know if she can, I think she's back this year. She told me, I don't know if she'll, but she told me she wanted to, what you call it.
So when you say they would be good for this, what's that mean?
They, 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 the things we're trying to do here, they, they, they feel like that's important. They feel like that's important.
Okay. Um.
And I think this, I think the champions have to be somebody's respected in the building, right? Uh, we have a.
It's a little people. I'm going to have more questions. We can rotate it.
We have, we have people.
I know, I hear you every year.
No, the thing is that, since we had, we had new, a lot of them. Uh, we, I, I can't understand why she's asking all these questions. And I think she's been asking more advanced questions than my question. Probably because maybe she has, uh, gotten more information than what I do. But is it my time now?
And then I have a question.
Okay. All right, I, I'm going to say this, uh, please, I know I'm a benefit of diversity. Sitting here is, uh, is a great thing and I appreciate diversity so much. Uh, that is why I have this question that I'm asking. Um, because this is the business unit that lists, uh, we pay less attention to since we came aboard and it's been ten months. I want to know a lot. My first question is, uh, what was the year's typical purpose for, for creating diversity? Include, uh, inclusion and, and, uh, diversity, equity and inclusion, DEI, right? Okay, then, um.
The players, yeah, for example.
I think I have so many questions, I will refer them.
Okay.
You have to begin. Yeah, because I don't want, I don't want us to answer it now. It might be deeper than what I need.
Yeah. We're done, can you email me those so I can?
Yes, yes, yes. It's something that I need to do on properly. That's not rushing. Then is there a blueprint for it that created the department? Then, uh, how do we measure its success? Because we need to know what the purpose is, what are the things we need to do? And then we need to know what the measure is on, knowing when we're successful, we're going to the right direction, we're not going to the right direction. And then I also want to know how often, if there's a report for that success, how often are they written or delivered? Or to whom are they delivered? Okay, then, uh, was there a butcher for that unit? Then, um, for me, as a businessman and also an investor, I always want to know what is the return on investment? On anything, everything, including even groceries, when I'm buying groceries, I want to know this one, what benefit it's going to give me. I analyze it all the way to the last thought. I'm sorry. So not to do, to know the return on investment, I have to know, uh, the cost benefit, uh, for that purchase or that investment or whatever I am doing, okay? By knowing what the cost benefit is, I now know, yes, this invest, this investment is giving is yielding result. Or maybe I need to redirect my goals, my targets. If the target is too high, I bring it back down. If it is too low, I raise it. And then I also know how often, maybe I increase the time, the timing for my reporting. Or, or maybe it's too often, right? So I do all those adjustments. Then to help me now know, okay, this is what I'm benefiting from this investment. Or should I take my investments somewhere else? So on a non-share, I completely don't have detailed information on the formation, the reporting. How would it assess this? And how often is this? If I can get that, then it will help me now ask some of the questions because all the things you're saying right now, I'm trying to like, okay, how do I measure that? How do I know where that fit in? Or that, does it fit? Does it make sense? So that's all I really want to know about the department.
Okay.
So my list are long because if we went to answer it, we're not going to, we're not going to leave here.
Well.
So I'm going to email that to you guys.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And I would say part of it, the first question you asked, it started from our parents in two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
With our superintendent at the time, Dr. Karamantia, and then, um, a consultant that then came on board, Dr. Andrew Graham, who ended up being, um, part of the action plan from those parents at that community conversation. And just as you get the paperwork for community conversations, I know they, they take the transcripts from that and, and those conversations. But I don't know who owns those, you know, that, that, but I know that there would have been a transcript. And Linda, you might be able to talk to her about who owns those, that you might even have them. But in two thousand fourteen specifically. Um, I think for, for me, one of the things, as you quoted your other question of measure, probably one of the easiest things, if you go back and look at our state report cards. And that's something, if you go back and look at that two thousand fourteen report card and you look at last, our most recent report card on the State Department of Ed, there are a couple of things to be able to look at. And one of those, I would say, is to look at the subgroups of what our enrollment looks like and then what the mobility looks like. So, and that's something that in looking at one of the questions that Darby had submitted, what that looked like. So in. So in two thousand fourteen, um, our mobility, our top three. Our top three American Indian, which really isn't. As important as that is, that number one being so high is because we only had eighteen in that subgroup. And so even two leaving is gonna make, um, but Hispanic at fourteen point one and our economically disadvantage of thirteen point eight. When you look at what we're doing now and you look at the numbers of our state report card of where we are, we have decreased those significantly. And when you look at our actual enrollment, we have almost doubled some of those subgroups as well. So in the, in the impact of what our office of diversity and inclusion, we have become an even more welcoming environment. And we have expanded the diversity in our student population and and therefore expanded. The opportunities for students all over our area. So I think that when you want, if you want hard data, look at our report cards. And those are, those are important numbers simply because they're, they're what's actually happening with our students.
Okay.
I would add something to that Julie might disclose, and she was at that conversation. You know, if I had to summarize the Isaac, I think that I would say there were many voices in the room, especially our students. And then not Gilbert. And so if nothing else, it was, it was a very. A wake-up call of sorts to, we had families that felt disconnected, whether there were language barriers or other areas that we weren't. Doing as much as we could do to make them feel welcome in schools and able to participate in the child's education. But our students were also saying, I'm not sure that my voice is being heard as well, and Julie, you might want to add into that.
And that there were limits to their ability to access the education that they wanted to access. And we heard a lot of that and some of the, again, to your point of the. Just not being educated, some things that were happening that people didn't realize either, they didn't realize they were happening. Or didn't realize how much they were impacting our students' day-to-day lives. And the distraction from allowing them to access their academic. Potential, because they were dealing with this other breadth of, um, challenges that we didn't.
There were daily educational experiences, small things, right, in some ways that you wouldn't have even necessarily thought about, so.
Well, it's the barrier issue to learning, sorry, it's breaking down the barriers, I mean, we say it all the time. We, the most important thing we do is educating students, and if there are things that are, you know, causing that to not happen, we have to be able to address those. And a lot of them are not learning issues, a lot of them are, you know, just daily, daily things like Linda said. And one of the other things that came out of that conversation too was really the difference in our district. Um, you know, what it looked like on the west side of the district versus what it looked like on the east side. And that's something over the last, you know, four to five years, we've really focused on, we are Lakota and bringing that together. And that was something that was also in that conversation was the access to things, because we are a large school district too. And and where, where things were happening.
You see, let, let me add something to, let you understand the directional grounds. If anybody understands what a student can feel. When they're different, it's me, because I've been through that and how, even personally, I remember one, twenty years ago, almost twenty years ago. The first job I got was a course center job, and I was making calls, collection job, called people to collect money. First coming from Africa with my, the way I speak, my accent, my informations, all kinds of things. I know how hard it is to get through, but being somebody that's very tough, not giving up. I was always talking the department. Now, what I'm asking this is, I understand how this can help. But I believe that we are paying less attention in this unit, because I don't think the community is being fed. With enough information on our activities in the department. And then also, we need to also dive deeper to see the operational purpose, I mean, daily operations. What is being done on daily basis, so that when somebody now call a board member and say, okay. This department, this, 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 what are they doing? See, we're not giving enough information to the, to the, to the community.
I can respond to that, there's no way I could tell you what I'm doing every day this time, because. Yesterday, maybe yesterday.
No, get it right, sorry, sorry, before you answer, I'm not saying on daily basis, that's why in my request, I said. How often are those reports shared with the community and how is it done? Exactly, you understand, I'm not saying every day you want to see it.
Quarterly, yearly, month, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, um. You know, I think everything changes day. And so there are certain things we do that over a long time, I also feel like. The job we do is not boom, 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 in this department, it is, the need comes up, things happen. I get calls every, every day, from a principal, from a, a parent, from a teacher, asking, Mr. Card, I need your help with this, what do you? And if I don't know, I find out, a lot of stuff I know that they ask me, I've just all been around and. Been around lots of different people and have studied and asked a lot of questions to people that are different than me. Uh, but sometimes we don't, you know, so you say like yesterday, I had some stuff I want to do, some, I had some reading I wanted to do, and some stuff, I want to get some stuff together. Or principal calls, I mean, I need to go over that. I'm over two hours dealing with situation, but dealt with, uh. Our, our department, but she felt I was the best person to deal with it. Um, so those things happen, but I understand what you're saying, so we'll, we'll see what we can do with that.
And I would also say that when you look at the real purpose of. Lowdy, one of the things that it, it says is to better be able to partner with our parents. To provide that access and inclusion, and so one of the things that I've been doing is our ESL Connect. Um, many of our families speak a different language as their primary language, our computer system is English. Our parents don't necessarily have that same access, is that something? That is community-based? No, but is that something, you know, more specific to what that looks like? And that direct impact, just from the start of the school year to now. We have impacted four hundred students in accessing final forms, in accessing whether they needed lunch applications or things like that. But the idea of, it also is a long-term impact of these, these families with the schools. And the reason it's that long-term is because now they can get into our computer system, they know how to get in, they know where to go. We, I had a dad tell me, this is the first time I've ever seen my son's grades, because he didn't know how to get into hack. And many of us, one of the gifts of final forms is that we have a technology piece on there that asks, how do you access? And then do you have that internet? And so we may have some pre-supposed ideas about what our internet access looks like for a variety of our families. But now we're gonna have a little bit more tangible to be able to, okay, you know, this whole community or, you know, it's more. This, this is only being done through a cell phone, what that access on hack looks like on a cell phone. And part of ESL Connect is having all of the people in the right place to be able to support a family when we say. What do you use to access? And they say, my phone, then we help them to find it on their phone, because I have scrolled and scrolled and scrolled and scrolled. Where if I come up on a screen, it's right there. And then how to change a language, because it's in English, then you have to go in and change the language. And so, and those directions aren't in any specific language, now we have all of that access, and so what does that look like? That's, that's one of the things, but that's not necessarily. A community-wide, other than it, we might have some community partners, one of the things I did this with, we were at a Reach Out Lakota event. As a community partner, knowing that these were our families and how do we best connect with them right there where they're already at. Some of them have been at school buildings based on those building administrators saying, this is the need in our building. And one of the gifts of those, we did one in a, in a residential area. Naturally, technology doesn't always work successfully, and several of parents were. You know what, I'm gonna be at this building on Friday, come on over, but my child doesn't go to that building, that's all right. And they came, and this was a building that their children have aged out of. And the welcoming of the staff there, everything of, oh my goodness, you know, you're. But the comfort of that parent not having that primary language of English, coming to a building that they no longer attend. That's not a measurable, I think, that's a, that's a subjective measurement, but that's a huge success. And, you know, that, that's something that there, some of those, I mean, I might be able to give some numbers. But I can't give that story as a quantitative.
In essence, I want you to understand what I'm asking, not for you to, not that I really need detailed explanations. I'm trying to show that up, when the purpose is indicated, we have reports, those kind of things, you have numbers. Okay, those, you don't go into the details, but this week or this month, depending on how often we report. This is how many we did in this category, this is how many we did in this category. See, with all that we share, the community knows what each unit is doing, the unit is doing. Because I don't know.
Well, I think that you're also saying, and Mrs. Aguilar is to me, is that anecdotal data is necessarily a number, is also. Something that should be shared.
To be shared, yeah.
So, can I ask this to, to move on, because I want to make sure that all quarters have a chance to ask questions or make their comments. Uh, we will come back around, everybody wants everyone's hat of pants to do that within our time. This is Shaffer, this is Casper.
Go ahead. Um, again, I don't have a lot of questions, I feel like since I've seen a change in the district. And the comments we get and the feedback we get from some of our diverse learners, whatever that may look like, however they may fit. Again, here in your data, you show that at this point, over thirty-nine percent of our district. Is a diverse learner in some way, and again, I would imagine some of these that just fall under a non-diverse category. They may be new to the district and still can access support, so while that data doesn't support it, I would. Expect that over fifty percent of our students are taking advantage of the services and the, the access that you are providing. And I think anecdotally, again, I've seen a difference and. Trying to remove those barriers and allowing these kids to access the full ability of their education. And that's what we want, I mean, for, that is the goal of our educational system, is to make sure every student's successful. And I have definitely seen a change since we focused on this work from when we had some rather tense meetings. With AAUL at the beginning before we started this work.
And if I could follow up on that, I think, um, personally, I mean, I moved the district in two thousand three, we moved here because of the diversity. We both grew up in different areas and we didn't have diverse, we want our kids to have a real world experience. My time as principal of Dakota West, when any family, family come in, what do you love the best about Dakota West? I would say, if your kid will get a real world experience, they'll be around all kinds of people. Now, I may not be a friend with somebody for me or hang out or those who this, but I have, they have exposure. Um, and I, and I know how important that is, because I can use my personal self, but I didn't have that exposure. Um, I got it later, you know, but if I had it earlier. I might have been able to do some things a little different in my life than what I've done, something that was just so important, and also think. Um, we talked about some, a little bit of, uh, data things, some things, last year, you know, I have students I meet with in the seven, twelve, going, starting this week, oh, starting October. Uh, so that principal's giving me the names and started with Ridge yesterday, or West, with Ridge yesterday, and last year with these, from those meetings. Kids brought things, what do you, what do you, what, what, what do we talk about, what they love about this place, Dakota, and they're building their in town. What needs to be improved, and they talked about some dress code studies, things, or some things there, were allowed us to make some adjustments to things, nothing major. But they felt heard, okay, and then I had the, the little, the little, one of them was really at, a little, little man at their west, their west freshman last year, their west. Um, I remember mom called saying, my daughter's excited because you listen to her. And that's what this is about, right? And we all know that we're gonna do better if we feel comfortable, we felt heard, we felt part of, and when you don't feel that. You're not gonna do as well, I don't care about your job, I don't care about the school, I don't care about your team, your, your personal life, when you feel heard and welcome, you feel better. I look at Lakota, I've been here since oh seven, to your hiatus, I'm back to Princeton there, um. And I look at it, and our district looks so much different in all kinds of areas. And I've learned so much over with, uh, special ed, which is, you know, it's that, Miss, Miss Longworth, I talked to her, Miss Cruz, and. There was a lot about that, so I need to learn about those things and make sure I'm doing it right. I think of all this, I think all I would ask people to do is. Take a chance and go out and learn about people. When we learn, we're not always crazy, we learn about each other, that's why I'm built, and I think that our kids. Most of our kids love that, it's us, old people like me, that sometimes dig our heels in.
Questioned, oh.
I was gonna say, one other thing to follow up on that is also, as educators, the more knowledge we have, we have. A large population of students that have religious holidays that are not necessarily followed along with. A holiday calendar that a district has, and. When you think about, okay, well, how do we accommodate, there might be fasting and things like that. Previously, kids sat in the office in chairs while their class went off at lunch. First thing when somebody walks in and they see a kid in a chair in the office is, uh, what they do. So now, these children are, are being looked at as maybe they did something wrong. And as that knowledge built from the champions out, it's the idea of, there are several teachers that during those times. Come down to my room and they did games, they did activities, they did different things with that. And also then helping educators, you know, there are times where there are some significant testings, situations happening. Helping teachers to remember, remember that they're, this is a time of fasting for them. They might be best for testing opportunities in the morning, and, and that afternoon might not be their best performance, simply because of. That culture and their religion and how they are supporting that, so it, it's the opportunity to. Learn what is in our community and how to support it, so, sorry, Julie.
I just wanted to jump in on it a little bit, um, one of the things I try to do is look at it. Not only from the code lens, but what about when our kids leave here, what does that look like, and so, um. DEI departments or offices exist outside of the K-12 spectrum, if you talk to the Fortune five hundred companies, you talk to. Things in our local chamber, you talk to Joe Meyer, the greater Cincinnati Chamber. He'll tell you about the DEI offices that they have, um, and the companies that, that. Our kids are gonna be working at, so this is not unique to, to schools, um, just at my last chamber meeting. Um, board meeting, uh, Dan Sutton, who's the CEO of Kemba Credit, just talk, talk briefly about, um, their DEI initiatives at Kemba. And so, um, this is just a part of the DEI initiatives that are going on all over the place. So I just want to make sure that people understand it's not just exclusive to Lakota or good schools.
I think that's the issue, is the DEI program is taking over nationally, um, and. And there are concerns of the focus, so, and what it's trying to fix, so again, we are an educational program. And the concern is, how is our grades, how are our grades being affected? But how, how were our grades before the DEI program came about? And how is it improving our children's grades? Because that's what our focus is, is education, and that's what our focus should be, is our children's education.
So, Mrs. Tony, Mrs. Shaffer was in the middle and still had questions, and again, I said, we're gonna come back around. Once everybody's had a chance to speak.
And I have more.
And I'm sure that there are lots of questions that we probably won't get to today, you are welcome to send those and get a written response. Let me let Mrs. Shaffer finish her thought.
I just, can we, it has been suggested at the microphone and by others. That we are teaching children that they cannot become who they should be in their full selves and that they are oppressed. Is that what this program is?
One way, I think we're doing the opposite.
I, I agree, but that is, I, I don't know what way, but it has been suggested at the mic that we are teaching children they are oppressed and oppressors. So, and I believe that your work is doing, trying to do the exact opposite and tell. Empowering all of these children to be their full selves, so.
I just want to say that is your hundred percent right.
And I can give some perfect classroom examples of that, um, through our Latino literacy program. Um, I literally just got an email from the Spanish floor teacher at one of our high schools. Her students were volunteers with that Latino literacy program at one of our early childhoods last spring. It was an opportunity for her Spanish four students to work with the littles, to continue to gain confidence in their language. It's also an opportunity when we, pre-pandemic, were able to do this for our ESL students, because. It really is a gift to be able to be multilingual, and our students are multilingual, and our students that are taking language classes. If they don't get a chance to practice that in the real world, they forget it, they don't use it, and so the idea. They forget it, they don't use it, and so the idea of what does that look like? Here is somebody that might not look like a little student speaking their language and. For some of these littles, um, because we had three and five year olds in there, you know, two year olds in there, um. Sometimes that language is the language of comfort, and so when somebody is, they are much more likely to participate in the activity. To feel safe to be in that area as well as being able to start practicing some language too. And we have had students that have participated in preschool services that were monolingual Spanish at the time. But were already having some speech and language difficulties that we were able to address, so that by the time they hit kindergarten, they were. Already in a really good place to be able to move forward with their language, so that's just one of our opportunities. Of building our students, all of our students into action activities to use their education.
Can I contribute quickly to what she just said, what just sponsored, and that is why. You see, if you see from what I, I requested, the community is, they don't get enough information, and that is why some of those kind of questions can come up. If my, my request is. And I think it's gonna create a lot more information in a community that can clear some of these things. Without these questions coming back all day, anyway, I'm sorry.
Let me let Mrs. Casper and I both probably have a couple of questions or comments, let's make sure we can do that, we can come back around, I know we could talk for three hours today. Kelly.
Um, well, Mr. Miller stole my real world thunder, no, no problem, I actually have, i- it kind of does what I want to speak to. I have a cousin who works in the diversity department of a Fortune one hundred company. And she said since they have started the DEI department, their profits have increased because people have a better understanding of each other. In a school setting, we've had many community conversations with students and. If you don't believe that students are the most brutally honest group of people that we have a community conversation with, and. Again, as Julie said, you, you've heard at the mic that we're teaching white kids at their oppressors and, you know, the. And I have seen it firsthand from our students who say, we have a better understanding of each other. We have a better understanding of where people come from because. Mr. D, perfect example, we have a lot of different ethnicities in this country, and that's a good thing. And for our kids to be able to learn this now. From each other and what each other's worlds are like is imperative to them being successful in the future, because. I- it's a real world out there, no pun intended, I mean, so, a- again, I'm hearing from our students. All of our students, white students, black students, brown students, all of our students, how they appreciate. That Lakota is trying to be inclusive of everybody, it only helps them.
And, and I, and I agree, I think it's important to understand, um. You know, our friends, our peers and whatnot, but the thing is, there's only so much time in a day, so are, are we taking away? From teaching that, that public education when we're focusing on these things, that's just something that I'm concerned about, we're not so much time. In a day, so we need to make sure that we're focused on education and not taking away from, from the basic. Education that we should be providing, and I also think that through the real world is, I mean, is how you. Develop, that's how you understand people, um, and you get to know other cultures and whatnot, and, and I've learned from the time, you know, that I was. Little, understanding different cultures as you grow, but again, there's only so much time in a day, so I just wanna ensure that we are continuing to teach. Teach the education services that we provide and not taking away from that by trying to.
I don't believe we are, but go ahead.
Mrs. Casper, do you have any?
No, I'm good, thanks, because there's only like seven minutes, so you should be able to speak.
I'll talk really fast, thank you. I appreciate everyone's thoughts here. We had, we've had many bright conversations about this, Mr. Pern.
For a lot of years before I was in this role.
Yes. He might have been, absolutely, actually, the book might have been. So when we talked at the workshop for, um, it was January of twenty twenty one. And I think you heard many of the same questions and comments that, that you're hearing today. I especially would take Mr. D's point of telling a story. But I think we do need to be telling it, I've said this before, our work competency is about education, yes, for all students. And when we look at these kind of issues, and Mrs. Aguilar has pointed some of these out very nicely today, when we look at barriers to education. And I feel like that story gets lost, what is the impact to those barriers on those children receiving education? Closing the gap on our report card. But that's an area that we need to work on, and I think this is one of those pieces that people don't understand that connection. So I think our department here could do maybe a better job of clearly spelling those pieces out about it. Why do those barriers matter, what impact do they have on specific students, more specific groups of students, and how are we addressing those? And we did talk about, um, rubrics back in January of twenty twenty one, I'd like to see us. Have some more specific data on that as well, anecdotal. Also works for me, and I think again, you've spelled many of those things out today. So I would like to see us be a little more focused on that, and I have one specific, specific question that I asked you. A while ago. And we had a frank conversation about. We had narrowed our focus down to two very, very specific subgroups, and you agreed with me. Have we made improvement in that?
Yeah, I think the, at that time, you know what I said, I think the world was on this, was it twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one was on this. Um, it's never been that, but the conversation with all that. Black and white, so that's what we thought, that was the big thing.
And there was no other.
Yeah, because that's what, that's where the world was, unfortunately for various reasons, and I, I'm getting all that right now. Cause just COVID, I think this has always been about special way of kids. It's always been about LGBTQ kids, it's always been about our low, low economic kids having access to things, that's what it's about. It's about Hispanic, it's about blacks, but it's about all of those things, this has never been about race. The conversation gets stolen by people, it's never been about that. Um, and if you follow me ever in my career, it's never been about just that. Do I think because of my race, do I understand some of that, yeah, because I've dealt with stuff. But I said, go home, and my wife's white and my kids are mixed, and we deal with all these things, and we have these conversations. I have, uh, you know, the LGBTQ transgender, Lakota West was the. Where I had five transgender kids move because the people told them, Mr. Carter, they scared, no, Mr. Carter treats everybody like he's supposed to be treated. I didn't treat them special, I treat them like everybody, I listened, I cared, they come home and cry, I didn't understand sometimes. You know, I, I didn't understand, but I listened, right? Special department all the time on things, some of you may know in my, you know, I'm, I'm the senior director of diversity, I oversee first inclusion, but I'm also down buzzing for the district. And I'll be honest, we've got taken up more of our time than this is right now, I'll be hundred percent honest with. Calls come, I got two calls down this morning, I got a call from parents back, I gotta visit a parent, I gotta visit a kid in a building. So all those things, I don't look at them and say, black kid or white kids. No, or is he LGBTQ, or is he special, you need a kid, needs help, we need to talk about kid, I'm gonna help the kid. My, my over, my overarching focus is this, and when I don't have any. What, what I want education for, I'm gonna spell it out, is people in education that don't love kids. And we have that, if you're not about the kids, you need to go somewhere, and I've told teachers that, I've told adults that, I've told the kids, everybody.
And it's not lately.
So, you better understand, I want to focus on our, on our babies. And I'm gonna help our principals, and I'm gonna help our teachers, and all this other mess, y'all can deal with that.
Well, Elton, I like hearing that, and thank you for that, and I agree, I think all. All principals and all the teachers should be people to, so when there are certain classes that just say. Or certain people that are known to be welcoming, that is an issue, it should be all, it should be, everyone should be welcoming. And that is something that. And that is something that should be, but at the same time, we are here to focus on education. And that should be the main focus, and within that, there are issues that we have to deal with, but. There is just concern that this could be potentially taken away from our, from our, um. Children's education and not focusing on specifically. Because we have the report card that means to.
Education is not about ABCs. Yes, it's not, and it's about. Understanding kids where they're at and who they are and learning about them. That's called, that's why the people in education are about those relationships, right? That's why thirty year olds call me for advice that I had at Princeton are here, because they know I cared about, they know it's about relationships, it's not, they learned, they got good grades too. The grades were great, but let's be real, a couple of things are important. They need to know they're cared about and loved, just like everybody, but especially in our buildings. They will always get that from me, and I can't control anybody else in here, they will get that from me.
Can I go over my bullet points, just to make sure?
No, I'm going to finish, and then we're going to give our administrators a chance to speak, and I'm sorry to be rude, I know we should have allowed more time, and we'll have another meeting again soon. But I'd like everybody to have a chance. Let me just finish my portion by saying, I want our focus. To always talk about barriers to education, that's really, really important, and we have that conversation. I think it gives a different understanding, but we just said. The tag on to that is student engagement with one trusted adult within their building. As a direct, a direct impact on academic achievement, those are the things we should be talking about because those are the lies.
I think we do, maybe they just don't get it out, but we talk about it, maybe it's not widespread, maybe we need to do better.
As an assumption that we all know that, we don't communicate that.
Yeah, that's what you want.
Okay. All right, I'm trying to get us out on time, Mr. Miller, anything else?
No, thank you.
Mr. Z, Mr. Zink.
I was asked to pull together some boss of the program, uh. One of the things that I'd like to add is, in the permanent appropriations, we had two hundred seventy two million, one hundred twelve thousand. Eighty one dollars and sixty percent appropriate, but this would make up about eighty seven thousandths of a percent. It's a low amount, but it is real dollars, that is the real dollars, uh, and I would like to add.
No supplements. There are no supplements going in.
No, that is correct, there are not, and I would like to add that that number is not to exceed that because. Uh, part of that, there is material supply budget that they can use to purchase some items, so they might not spend all of it.
Can you send me a breakdown of the purchase services? My life, thank you.
It, no, keep mine included, and that is that budgeted, so it wouldn't exceed that, but I can give you the actuals.
Yes, that'd be great.
You come back, Molly.
That sounds like cheating.
One of my superintendent's heroes colleagues or whatever talks about in their district. Um, three things for kids, it sounds like what I think all of us are saying, in one way or another, that we will know every kid by name. Strength and need, so while we talk about having seventeen thousand five hundred kids. There are people in those classrooms and those buildings and in this district know every student by name, their kids by name, strength. And I love that kind of, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. So I apologize, we're a little late getting out, anything further?
That's a plan, I'm having another meeting since we weren't gonna get everything done, so go ahead and have a next meeting.
If there are, there may be other issues, we'll have to take a look at, we will certainly have another meeting. Or anything else?
Definitely have more, I would like to confirm all the questions that were answered during Jerrica correctly.
Email all of your questions, and I would ask you to respond.
And maybe respond to all of us?
Any information sent out, let's send it to the committee so we all stay on the same page. Is there anything else? All right, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
Mrs. Casper.
Miss O'Connor. I was just going back about. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Miss Aguilar.
Yes.
Yes, I wouldn't know, but, Mr. Miller. And Mr. Zink, yes.
My kids always said, in class always said, oh, Mrs. Day has one of her highlighter shoes.
Oh, I like your highlighter, I love my highlighter shoes.